The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. This morning, invocation will be given by Commissioner Shaw.
Dear Lord, we thank you in advance for your love. Please continue to bless us with humility and allow us to be servants to the community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Mr. Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the October 1st meeting? So moved, John.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the October 1st meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. Presentations, Ms. Blackshear.
There are none, Your Honor.
Okay. No communications or petitions?
There are none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do you have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Dixon, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I have no additions or deletions to today's very small calendar. There are a couple items, though, I'd like to highlight. One is a service agreement, number two, the Montgomery, item number two, the Montgomery County Land Reutilization Court Service Agreement. This is for the demolition of the former Twymon Medical Office Building, which is located adjacent to Wright Factory Site at 2728 West Third Street. The $75,000 for the service agreement is the 25% match, which is $50,000 for the Ohio Development Grant that we received, as well as some $25,000 in holding costs and administrative services for the land bank to perform that demolition. After that demolition is complete, the land bank will convey the property to the city. So this is a great opportunity to attract further investment next to Wright Factory Site. Item number six, which is a first reading of Emergency Resolution 6893-25, is the 2020, authorizing the submission of the 2026 through 2030 Consolidated Plan. It is currently in final draft. The copy of the plan is available on the city's website. The public input survey is available on the city's homepage, as well as Community Development Division page. Comments are still being accepted via survey and at comdev@datonohio.gov. As you know, the consolidated plan requires a great deal of community engagement, and there were four scheduled public input sessions that occurred from April through October. In addition to that, there were additional listening sessions, planning sessions, with stake, and stakeholder meetings throughout the months of August and September to gather additional input and feedback from partner organizations, stakeholders, and community members. And that helps identify the priorities and the goals for the Consolidated Action Plan. Every year, you know, the consolidated plan. Every year, we have to do an action plan to update HUD on what we are going to be implementing in the consolidated plan for that year. The consolidated plan includes the 2026 Action Plan, since it's that first year. Funding amounts for 2026 are still projected at this point. We believe they're, based on conversations with HUD staff and based on the ongoing budget negotiations and things happening with the federal government, we believe that 2026 funding will be status quo. But we won't know that until spring, when we receive our award letter. And then, the action plan and consolidated plan are due to HUD on November 17th, and that's why we're doing two readings over two meetings, so that we can wrap it up and get it to HUD by the 17th.
Okay.
All right? And that's all I have.
Okay. So, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on City Manager's recommendations?
None on calendar items, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, comments, thoughts, questions on City Manager's recommendations? Ms. Turner Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Dixon, and welcome back, as mentioned. Just a couple of questions. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you going through the additional details as it relates to the submission of the 2026-2030 Consolidated Plan. When were those sessions held? Because we didn't get any information or notification of those community sessions.
The public input sessions were held April 5th. This was a session at the Neighborhood Conference that was provided, that covered a lot of things, but there was a session specifically to overview the consolidated plan and provide attendees the opportunity to provide input. There was a public hearing for August, at August 11th, with the CNDA-B. Actually, there were three public hearings: August 11th, September 8th, October 13th, at CNDA-B meeting, which of course is the...
Is that October 13th?
October 13th is when the final draft goals and priorities are going to be shared during a public hearing. So that's going to be the fourth one, sorry.
Okay.
September 8th, the draft plan, future goals and priorities were shared with CNDA-B and made available for comment. And August 11th, the draft plan was also presented. So, those were the four, those are the four structured meetings. And then, the additional input meetings were throughout, for the survey and throughout the different groups that I talked about, the stakeholders and planning sessions.
Okay. Could we, could we make sure in the future that we work very closely with the Director of Commission? Because I don't believe we had any of those dates, and I could be very wrong. However, if we could just...
We'll follow up on that and make sure and double check to make sure that you received...
Thank you. I appreciate it. Because usually Ms. Jackson would note the various different meetings and the agendas, and she'll have that laid out in the calendar invites for the week. So if we could follow up. Now, October 13th, which is next Tuesday, right? What is the, the process? Where will it be held and the time? What are the particulars for that date? And it's open to the public, is that correct?
It is open. It's a public hearing. So let me just, I have some more information. The public hearings are published in the Dayton Daily News, as required by HUD, right? The CNDA-B dates are also published on the website a year in advance, so that is, you know, for CNDA, to track CNDA-B activity. The CNDA-B meeting, the October 13th, is at 4:30 in the PRC on the mezzanine.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the other question that I have, could we get a copy of that? I don't know if my colleagues would like to have a copy of that, but I would like to have a...
It's a large, it's a very large document, and I will send you a link.
That's fair.
But it's on the website. I mean, you can find it on the website as well.
Can we at least get copies of the summary? If you can give us hard copies. I know it's a large document. I'm very familiar with the consolidated plan. But if you can at least give us the action plan. The action plan is not too heavy, as more so is the consolidated plan. But if we could get a hard copy of that, and I don't know if my colleagues will have any interest, I appreciate it. And then, thank you for highlighting the service agreement, item number two, the land bank. And I'm glad we're utilizing this, this option. Again, this is an example of the tools in our toolbox, right? And being able to expand. So is this for the expansion? How will this play into, I know this is to complement the, the West Pot, right? So is this additional park? How will that space or that parcel be used? Do you have an idea of what the medical site...
Yeah. There isn't a plan for the site at this point in time. It just provides further development opportunity.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
That's good. Thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, I just want to welcome back City Manager. I'm going to be voting no on item number eight. Last week, we had a really sober conversation around that. From my perspective, there were some outstanding questions that really should be asked before we enact these. My biggest concern is that we have 62 group homes currently. If I understood the staff report last week, we believe that we need 48 to care for the youth in our, in our community. That would put us significantly over the 48, or the 62 is significantly over the 48. And enacting this creates a pathway to add more group homes to our community. I think, and I want to be clear, I was asking for an overall cap of 48 with, in conjunction with the 12 cap per land use area, so that there can never be more than 48, nor more than, until we have attrition in those areas. I mean, the one area with 37, that's three times, three times the 12. So, I don't think we have the, I don't think we have it all completely formulated to enact the changing code. And I think keeping the moratorium, getting it right, would be the best path.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
No, I'm good today.
Okay. So I'd like to have a motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
I move that we adopt the City Manager's recommendations.
Second.
It's been probably moved in second to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
Okay. Legislation, Ms. Blackshear?
First reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6891-25, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office, in the amount of $249,999.32 on behalf of the City of Dayton and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, being declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of Emergency Resolution Number 6891-25.
Second motion, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved in second to have Resolution Number 6891-25 declare emergency. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Second reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6891-25, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office, in the amount of $249,999.32 on behalf of the City of Dayton. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Mr. Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
First reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6892-25, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office, in the amount of $91,002.54 on behalf of the City of Dayton and declaring an emergency.
Being declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of Resolution Number 6892-25.
Second motion, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved in second to have Resolution Number 6892-25 declare emergency. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Second reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6892-25, authorizing the acceptance of a grant award from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Traffic Safety Office, in the amount of $91,002.54 on behalf of the City of Dayton. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Mr. Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
First reading, Emergency Resolution Number 6893-25, authorizing the submission of the 2026-2030 Consolidated Plan and the 2026 Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing the acceptance of grant awards under three community planning and development formula programs from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of the City of Dayton and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, Resolution Number 6893-25 being declared an emergency, I move for its immediate passage.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably moved in second to have Resolution Number 6893-25, emergency. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
First reading, Ordinance Number 32162-25, appropriating property designated as parcels 98SH&amp;T, 100SH, 108T, 110SH&amp;T, 129T, and 131T in connection with the Salem Avenue Reconstruction Phase IV Project. Second reading, Ordinance Number 32161-25, repealing, amending, and enacting various sections of the Revised Code of General Ordinances relating to the zoning code. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Mr. Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
No.
Turner Sloss.
Abstaining. Please note that I will be abstaining for the reasons noted by Commissioner Fairchild. In addition, I would like to commend the staff for the additional work and the great detail that they have committed to in amending the zoning code. But there's additional work that needs to be done in regards to answering the questions, as well as state legislation that will be coming down with House Bill 315. Would like to get an understanding of how that comes into play with the proposed zoning code changes. So abstaining for Ordinance Number 32161-25. Thank you.
That concludes the legislation, Your Honor.
Okay, good. Thank you. Do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Your Honor, two citizens have registered to speak, and I would like to remind every one of our three-minute time limit.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Before I get started, I just wanted to tell and say thank you for everybody who reached out and said and sent prayers for my son, who was in a horrific motorcycle accident recently. I just wanted to say thank you. That meant a lot to me.
Okay. Sorry.
Your name and address for the record.
Tasha Roundtree, 4609 St. James.
Please pull the mic a little bit closer.
Are you saying I'm short? You know that?
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners and everyone in attendance. I'm here on behalf of the residents of the Wolf Creek Neighborhood Association. After working for nearly two years on this project and working with a variety of departments and organizations, we agreed to a plan, and that plan was changed without even notification, not a phone call from the City of Dayton, not even so much as an email. I received a phone call from Emmy, almost crying, from the land bank, only to tell me that our project has been put on hold without even so much as a polite text, email, or anything else. I was told that she received a notice that Tony Kruger and Steve Gondo wanted a more densely populated area after we came up with a plan of action. We had agreed on the homes, and we find this to be a deplorable action. We find this to be a violation of our trust. We find this to be absolutely a stab in the back. We worked diligently with the community. We worked with developers. We came up with a plan and with absolutely disregard for, for everything that we did. It was just absolutely nothing. And we didn't have any of these problems when y'all were putting up those $300,000 houses in our neighborhood. There was absolutely no obstacles. And we asked, could you put those in a land trust so our taxes wouldn't go up? Y'all didn't do that. When Mr. Ober sat in a meeting with me and Mike Squire and said, you better tell your grandmama to sell her house, y'all didn't stop that. Y'all didn't have no problem. When we bought in the land bank, because county corps just wanted to make as much money as they could in our neighborhood, $300,000 houses next to $70,000 houses where the appraisals haven't gone up in 10 years are now $170,000. Their taxes went up three times. But when we've tried to put up affordable housing, now the project is on hold. Now the project is stopped. We asked for scholar homes so that we could help women who were STNA's go to be LPNs go to be RNs. Because if you start off as an STNA on Section 8, if you make a dollar, you will lose your Section 8. But if you're in a program called the Scholar Program, it is designed for you to move and progress. These are the programs we asked for, and we didn't get access to those programs. And that's why we went to land bank. That's why we went to Habitat for Humanity, because they allow women of color to progress and not stay stagnant and have the illusion of wealth in a $250,000 house that has to be rental property for 30 years as rental property in a neighborhood versus the ability to actually have a home.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Roundtree.
This is ridiculous that the city would actually...
Ms. Roundtree, thank you for your comments.
...end a project and not give us a phone call.
Ms. Roundtree, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. Kathleen Galt.
Kathleen Galt, 5066 Safeway Drive, Dayton.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. So, I'm repeating some things. So, the arc of the moral universe is long. However, it bends towards justice. So with issue nine, we are asking the voters to take their opportunity to bring justice to the racist and, I believe, and many others believe, the racist and discriminatory institutional act of closing Good Sam with so many people upset and protesting, as we have collected the 600 testimonials about the closing for the federal agents or federal investigators that came from DC, as we collected the signatures, the 10,000 signatures over four rounds, we busted it out to get this on the ballot. We're now asking the voters, and we're asking the mayor, the city manager, the city commissioners, who, when we came in here and begged over the years for you to do something about that closing and destruction, you did little to nothing to stop that. And I'm going to repeat, if Premier had tried to close down Miami Valley, all hell would have broken loose. All hell would have broken loose, because it's near UD and Oakwood. So I believe it was an institutional racist act, based on money, clearly, but they would have never tried to do that in that predominantly white neighborhood. So, we've done so much. We protested, we talked, we begged, we did 600 testimonials, we collected 10,000 signatures for this ballot initiative. So it's now, it's time for the commissioners, the mayor, the city manager, others here in the city officials, to vote for issue nine, to give this opportunity to bring justice to that issue. I believe if that federal investigation had been fair, the head attorney for Premier had been the head attorney in the very office that we filed that complaint in DC, Leon Rodriguez. That's who Premier hired. He had been the head attorney in the Office of Civil Rights under Health and Human Services. That was a rigged decision, because when we filed that complaint with ABLE, and they filed it in DC, it was under the 64 Civil Rights Act. It was under, based on racism and discrimination, which that situation was. But their head attorney, Leon Rodriguez, knew where to turn all the screws to determine, I mean, we want, we thought we were going to win that case, but we didn't because of that attorney. So we hope, you guys, we hope the city, people who signed that petition, come down here, talk to these city officials, let them know how you felt about that closing.
Thank you, Ms. Galt.
Vote for issue nine.
Thank you, Ms. Galt.
That concludes the speakers, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Dixon, any closing comments?
The only comment I'll make is, in response to Ms. Roundtree's comments, there was a lot of conversation happening between the city staff and the land bank staff. I believe they are going to be pulling a meeting together with the neighborhood to help explain what the concerns were with that particular development design and work towards a path going forward. There is not, there is still great interest in pursuing the project. They wanted to really make sure that it was complimentary and supportive to the rest of the development and investment that is planned and underway in Wolf Creek.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Blackshear, closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, closing comments? Commissioner Turner Sloss?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Ms. Dixon, thank you very much for that additional information regarding Ms. Roundtree's comments for the Wolf Creek Housing Development Project. So, the, I'm just trying to make sure I'm following. So the conversation or the phone call that was had or that was made to Ms. Roundtree, was that premature, being that, like, how was she notified? And I can ask these questions.
I can follow up with details on all of that. But what, my, from my understanding, there was a lot of conversation between the land bank and the city that wasn't conveyed, and that's why they want to have the follow-up meeting.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Yes, because we definitely support, and that's the purpose of a lot of the work that has been done by the staff, as well as the neighborhood, Ms. Roundtree, under her leadership. So we want to make sure that there is, in fact, a win-win, that we can complement all of the great things from the NIP dollars, the, all of the investment with county corps, Obera Project, the list goes on and on. And then, what we're seeing with the Sims Project on, on West Third Street. So, again, if you could let us know the details of that conversation, when that meeting would take place, the particulars, so that I'm sure that...
We'll do a follow-up.
Thank you. That, many of us have an interest in attending that meeting. And Ms. Roundtree, thank you for bringing the comments before the commission, so that we can get additional information and make sure that we are, in fact, partners in this project. Because we know that housing is a global issue, and we're trying to do any and everything that we need to do on the local level to make sure that we provide decent, affordable housing for our residents in the City of Dayton. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And thank the staff as well for your, your support in making sure that we continue those conversations and that they're very fluid and that they're transparent, and that we have a number of those parties that are involved to make sure that we're pushing forward our, our piece as it relates to our housing framework policy, and, and the list goes on. So thank you all for being receptive to that and Ms. Roundtree's comments. Ms. Galt, thank you for your continued advocacy, and thank you for being here this morning. Thank you, Ms. Reed, for the, the talking points that you've provided. The youth basketball registration, the city youth ball league opens October the 13th and runs through December the 1st. Families can sign up online at DaytonRec.com. Again, that's DaytonRec.com. And the SWAT karate, this is an excellent program, as many of our programs in our recreation centers, our Department of Recreation and Youth Services, they do an awesome job. And again, the registration opens now through November 29th for the SWAT karate program at Northwest Recreation Center, 1600 Princeton Drive. Classes run December 1st through February the 18th with beginners from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in advance from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. The registration fee is $60, and participants can sign up at DaytonRec.com. Again, that's DaytonRec.com. And I believe that's all the comments that I have this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for those comments. Thank you, City Manager, for playing to give us an update on the Wolf Creek. Could we get a copy of the plan that Ms. Roundtree discussed, as well as, do we have a more comprehensive plan that that plan needs to fit within for that neighborhood, so we can see that as we go forward? And then, a second question I had, last week, we were notified that we were going to get an update on the Safe Haven ordinance. That was going to be in our packet on Friday. I did not see it in our packet. Do we have an update of...
I was under the impression that it's for this Friday? The packet is this Friday? Because I was out last week.
Okay.
And so, there, it will be in your packet this Friday.
Okay, thank you. Given Ms. Galt's comments and the recent Dayton Daily News article that cites the Woolport Report, there was a question about why we had, how that report got, I can't remember the number, 300, 350 beds. Did we ever get an answer for why that number of beds?
It's a false narrative. It was created. No, there was, as I explained in talking at the, at that last meeting, there was a, it wasn't based on the number of beds Good Sam had, because Good Sam had more than that. It wasn't based on the... It wasn't based on the Cleveland model, because they had many more than that. It was the consultant and his expertise that said, okay, if there's going to be a public hospital, you know, what's, what's the right kind of size? And then it went on to talk about, you know, from beds from 50 to 350. But that was, that was the, there was not a scientific, it was the consultant's expertise that led to that.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you. Because I'll have to double-check, but I didn't think Good Sam had 300 beds.
They had more than that.
300. Okay.
And almost 600 or 500, and more than that.
Okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Galt. Ms. Galt, please.
But I just think of recent hospitals that have come to our community, so in, out in Beaver Creek doesn't have 300. Miami Valley South, Miami Valley North started out with, with no beds and then grew into beds, but less than 100 beds. So I was curious about, about that amount.
The CDC did not ask for...
Please leave, Ms. Galt.
And then finally, I just want to remind people that early vote started yesterday. You can go to the Montgomery County Board of Elections from 8:00 to 5:00 and cast your vote. And remind everyone to vote for the Human Service levy that we all support.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you for that, especially that last part. Even if it was 150 beds, half that number, you still can't pay for that with this levy. So enough said on that, it's going nowhere. The city of Dayton Human Relations Council will host the Housing Resource Connection Fair on Saturday, October 11th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Croc Center. That's 1,000 North Kiwi Street. The event will offer dozens of housing-related resources, including eviction assistance, legal aid, mediation, tenant unions, reentry, and immigrant services, and financial literacy support. Free lunch, goodie bags, and raffle prizes will be provided, and residents can register in advance at DaytonHRC.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Just a couple of things. First, Linden Heights is hosting, hosting a recycling drive this Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. They're taking all kinds of materials, materials that usually have to wait until a Tuesday to take down to the dump in Moraine. You can take to this recycling drive. They're accepting one tire per car, for instance, batteries, other household goods, and that's at Sovereign Grace Church at 1541 South Smithville. It's this Saturday from 9:00. Thank you, Linden Heights Neighborhood Group. Also, the Southeast Neighborhood Associations, who have been working together really nicely now over the last few years, are cooperating to hold a winter clothing drive for Cleveland Elementary. There are going to be three drop-off dates and times, so if you have a pen handy, grab it. It's October 11th at that recycling drive at Sovereign Grace Church at 1541 South Smithville from 9:00 to 11:00 this Saturday. The second one will be Monday from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Walnut Hills Neighborhood Meeting at Omer Park Church. That's October 13th, 6:30 to 7:30. And the last one is at the Linden Heights Neighborhood Association Meeting Thursday, October 30th, from 6:30 to 7:30. They prefer new, but will take gently-used winter clothing for the elementary school students at Cleveland Elementary. Also, I want to put in a little note of support. Commissioner mentioned the youth basketball signups. That's where my son started. He's now a senior playing varsity basketball. So I'm not saying there's a connection, but you never know. Sign your kids up for youth basketball. It's an excellent program. It's a great way to start. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
As they start early, get them in a space. Yep. Next thing you know, you have a scholarship and have a $20 million contract.
There you go.
All right, so a few things. First of all, the Manufacturing Day that was held this past Friday at Sinclair Community College. It featured young people from all over the region to involve themselves with making a bunch of different things, products as well. I was entered into a competition, making a car, and then raced the car and won the race, you know, with my intent to win. All right, other news, the My Brothers Keeper Program and My Sisters Keepers Program, sponsored initiative to help more and more of our young people understand what to do, not only in athletics, but after athletics. The work that you go through in terms of the whole process, it seems to be a reoccurring theme that former basketball player Norris Cole shared with our young people last week at the Mayor's Youth Summit, making sure that they're doing all the things they're supposed to do in their space to prepare themselves for not just the events that they're dealing with athletically, but also for the future, once their athletic career is, is ended. Additionally, the Senior Safe Program, something we've been doing for the last several months, again sponsored by the city, and also with the great help of our fire department, where senior citizens can call this number, 937-333-5555. And I'll repeat that number again, 937-333-5555. And they can sign up to have someone check on them every day at their designated time. They'll just call. If no one answers the phone, they will have someone come out and check on them. Again, totally free and just something to make sure we take care of the citizens that we have, the senior citizens that we have in the city of Dayton. Additionally, we have Central State University's Homecoming coming up this weekend, and I've been asked and honored to accept being the grand marshal for the parade on Saturday. So again, if you happen to ride by, you see me out there. I'm, I'm supposed to be leading the parade. The Central State University Homecoming. Again, I'm a 1973 graduate, Hall of Fame awardee, and have great love for the Central State University. Lastly, Ernie and Dela Green, who have done a lot of great things. Ernie Green is, of course, a former Cleveland Browns player some decades ago, and one of the individuals who has been, featured a lot with the whole Norma Ross Breast Cancer Survivors Program, all the things that they're doing in that space. And of course, he is one of the rare men who has been affected by breast cancer. And fortunately, he caught it early enough so he could be able to take care of himself and, and be cured, and I think still right now, cancer-free. So again, there's some recognition that we're doing to help he and his wife understand how much this community has appreciated the work that they've done in this, in this region. So again, doing that work, again, at Central State University. And with no further business to come before this commission, love and peace for all and hatred for none, this meeting is adjourned.